I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 7th, meeting of the Common Council of the City of Algoma. Have the clerk take the role, please.
Mary.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Cleveland.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Wheeze.
Here.
Meverden.
Here.
Pabick.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval or changes to the order of the agenda as published. Any changes or comments? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the meeting minutes from September 9th, 2019. Did everybody have a chance to read them? Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
Move.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Eugene. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Public comment. Before we get into John's public comments, this evening, we are -- it's a pleasure to introduce Joel Kitchen, our representative, who is going to give us a little update on what's going on in Madison. And appreciate you stopping, Joel, before his year.
No, great to be here. I'd like to catch up on what's going on here. There's -- to be honest, there's not going to be that much happening in Madison as far as the number of bills that we will pass as such compared to years past with split government, that just, you don't get as many things through. Transportation is always a big thing, I think, for local governments. We did increase transportation funding. The governor did veto down somewhat the amount of money we put into the local road improvement program, but that money is still there for your worst roads, so I hope you may be able to take advantage of that. Couple of things that we'll be dealing with, there's a -- there are bills that will provide incentives for emergency personnel, which I know you guys have dealt with that in the past. There's tax credits. It's $300 for a year for people that have been there between one and five years, then $600 a year for those five and more. For time spent on continuing education, they can get a $20 tax credit per hour for that, and then there's also mileage reimbursements. And these are all refundable tax credits, meaning if you don't owe any money, you still would get money back. So, you know, we're hopeful that, we understand that, you know, all the local governments, I think, are facing that difficulty finding people for firefighters, for EMTs, and that kind of thing. I should talk a little bit about the Anapi and the Mill Pond. You know, that's not my decision. That was a Sturgeon Bay, or not Sturgeon Bay, but Door County decision, and so I really don't have anything to do with the decision, but I did, I did bring down DNR personnel at one point, and we met in this room, and just to try to explain to people what they can expect coming out of that. The DNR doesn't take an official position, but honestly, they're very confident that the Anapi River is going to be a lot healthier once this is done than it is right now. Personally, I think if there's any place where, that we'll see difficulties, it may be Algoma, although hopefully temporarily. You know, as they, they'll draw it down slowly so that it won't be a whole lot of sediment, but there will be some sediment, and they expect the river to get a little more narrow and a little faster flowing, which will be, down the line, will be better for fish. But some of that will go into the lake, and there will be a short-term, you know, effect of that, I'm sure. For the, probably next summer you will see it. Hopefully after that, you won't, and things will start to get better. Let's see, what are some of the other? One of the other bills that I wrote with Senator Coles provides pollution credits, and what that is, and I think this could have a beneficial effect on the Anapi. What it is, a simple scenario would be Brown County wastewater treatment plant. The EPA keeps ratcheting down how much phosphorus they're allowed to put out, and for the next level, it's going to cost them like $250 million to lower the phosphorus just a little bit. Well, there's already a program in place where they potentially can contract with farmers and say, if you have a field that's contributing a lot of phosphorus, they would pay them to not plant that field. And in that way, I mean, in the end, what, how, the way it works out is, for the taxpayers, it's better because they get a greater reduction of phosphorus, and they don't have to spend that $250 million, and then for the farmers, of course, it provides an extra income stream. So what this bill does is creates a clearinghouse where it's not just wastewater treatments, it could be factories or whatever. They can, they can go to this clearinghouse and pay to buy these credits. And I expect it to, once we get the TMDL study done on the Anapi where we know exactly where the phosphorus is coming into the Anapi, it'll make it easier for them to apply for credits and use this clearinghouse. So I expect it to have a good effect here, you know, within the next few years. Let's see, what other things? Seem like there were other things I should bring up, but do you guys have any questions on anything? Maybe my mind will get jogged a little bit. Yes?
I would ask you about, has any discussions occurred about changing the definition of commercial fishing to include our lifeblood and our, on our fishing fleet?
Yeah, I don't, I, to be honest, I don't think that's moving along very well at this point. I mean, it's going to be difficult, but I mean, I, you know, I know it would be nice if you could qualify for, you know, harbor assistance and that kind of thing by being classified as a, as a commercial port. The flooding, I know, has been an issue here in Algoma. To be honest, we don't have a lot to do with that on the state. That's pretty much a, you know, a federal with the Army Corps and all that. You know, I had mentioned to the mayor earlier, if, you know, if there are things that come up where you want my office at least to put a word in and try and help with that when you're applying for grants or whatever, let me know, but, but we don't really have any direct control of that. Anything else you guys have questions on?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Appreciate you stopping by. And then we'll go over to John Pabick, KCEDC update.
Kewaunee County Economic Development Committee, Executive Committee met on the 19th of June, uh, June, of September, and noted that there have been some resignations and there are openings for the Executive Committee. Of note, on October 15th, we will, Algoma will be hosting Manufacturing Career Days with most of the activities, I believe, taking place at CTI, at Wisconsin Packaging, and I believe also at Olson Fab. Lunch will be at the Algoma High School for that. This alternates with the Ag Career Days on an alternate year basis, so you're aware of that. October 30th, we have Booze and Bites, which is formerly the Taste of Kewaunee County. This is a fundraiser for the KCEDC. The WEDA Economic Development 101 is still on for the 23rd of October. I know that that overlaps with the League of Municipalities Convention in Green Bay. The Executive Director is making a minimum of five visits per week to different businesses, existing folks who are already contributing to it. Also, there is a push for investing in the KCEDC, and that's being done by members of the Executive Board. They're doing outreach to different businesses, organizations within Kewaunee County. And our next meeting is on the 17th of October, 10:00 at 8:00 a.m., and down in Kewaunee at the County Admin Building.
Okay, any questions, John? Thank you, John. Jamie, is anybody else signed up for? Okay. Nobody else under public comment, then we'll move on to consideration of bills. General bills and credit card payments, did everyone have a chance to review those? Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Yep.
The brew, that 10th, is that, is that pumping out water?
Right.
Pumping water two times, there's a third bill that's still outstanding that we have not received.
Is insurance? Where do we get the money for that?
I didn't budget.
And that's, is it worth it? I mean, for...
Well, it's worth it if you lived out on, in that area with the water. We had no other way to, I know you can comment on it, the fire department tried it, but...
Yeah, we tried pumping with the fire department. We pumped for eight, nine hours, and it was not going anywhere.
It seems like a lot for...
No, they came in with a big pump. And I would agree with you, Mitch. It's tough, but the other side of it is, is what's our other option?
Any other questions on any of the other bills?
Till we get that lift station figured all fixed, we've got no choice.
Maybe a stopper.
Well, that's...
It's unusual, I mean...
You got a inside of Mother Nature?
Any other questions on any of the other bills? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve all the bills with the exception of Wheeze Memorial.
Sold.
Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Seconded by Eugene. Roll call vote.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Wheeze.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Then I'll accept a motion to approve the Wheeze Memorial Bill. It's removed. Moved by Scott.
Second.
Seconded by John. Roll call vote.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Wheeze.
Epstein.
Meverden.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Mary.
Here.
Dashlet.
Thank you. Any other claims before the city at this time? Jamie? Conference attendance, you can see that there's a few names on here for the League of Municipality Conference, which is coming up for October 23rd to the 25th in Green Bay. It's myself, Lee Dashlet, Jake Mary, John Pabick, and Matt Murphy. And then also, we have a request to send Matt to the Wisconsin Marine Association Fall Conference in Wisconsin, also, excuse me, 21st and 22nd of November. I take a motion on all of those. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Jackie. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Committee reports, we're moving right along tonight. Let's start out with finance and personnel. That meeting was called to order by yours truly on September 18th at 8:30 a.m. The roll was taken. The minutes reflect that the meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law. There was a motion made and seconded to approve general bills and credit card payments. That motion, excuse me, passed. There was also a motion to recommend to the council to approve attendance to the municipality conference, and also for Matt to attend another conference. You approve that tonight. There was also a motion seconded to approve attendance at UWGB Presidential Election Academy for our clerk, Jamie Jackson. That was approved. There was a motion made and seconded to basically, like I said, approve Matt going to the Marine Association Fall Conference. There was nobody here to talk under public comment. Under old business, there was an update on the Development of Property Maintenance Code on the cold tire ordinance. After a lengthy discussion, there was a motion made and seconded to draw an ordinance. That motion was defeated. Under new business, City Attorney Jim Downey was present, and he discussed the two proposed ordinance changes relating to storage structures as a conditional use in our two zones, and we went over that. There was a ordinance 1819 to create a conditional use code being proposed due to the proposed ordinance regarding allowing storage structure. That'll be on the agenda tonight. Also, another ordinance on storage structures as conditional use, requiring further information and putting further requirements on the ordinance itself. There was a motion made and seconded to forward the ordinance 18, repealing section 1301 2C, and that's regarding compensation for the utility commission. That first reading will be tonight. There was also a motion made and seconded to allow the mayor to enter into a contract with Office Enterprises for a new postage meter. There was a motion made and seconded to waive the daily boat launch fee to people with slips west of the Second Street Bridge upon closure of the river until October 15th, but because the delay in closing the river, that will no longer be necessary. There was also a motion made and seconded to authorize refunds requests from Dennis Bilski and Brandon Cooper. The Treasurer, Amber Shallow, provided an update on the 2020 budget process, which we are currently involved in. The clerk gave an update on the website redesign project. I'll talk a little bit about that under my report this evening. The Treasurer also updated committee on the codification project being completed by mini-code with a hopeful completion in the next couple of months. There was a motion made and seconded to adjourn, meeting adjourned at 9:50 a.m. Questions or comments? Hearing none, then we'll move on to protection of personal property. Jackie?
The Meeting of the Protections of Persons and Property Committee was called to order by Chairman Meverden in compliance with open meeting laws at 4 o'clock on Monday, September 30th at City Hall. All members were present, in addition to Kelly Cosse, Tom Bandenack, and Police Chief Randy Remicker. The minutes and agenda were approved. The report from Kelly for Algoma Rescue, they responded to 38 calls in September. So far, year-to-date, there have been 313 calls. Both squads were inspected, or underwent their yearly inspection by the State Ambulance Inspector, and no issues were found. A significant amount of hours were put in by both fire and rescue personnel to prepare for their fundraising event at Wine Fest. Algoma Rescue has and will continue to stand by at the Algoma varsity football games. Under the fire report, they responded to five calls since last month. Aerial 602 repairs are complete, and it's back in service. Annual pump testing was done, and all units performed as expected. Generator is good to go. Thirteen new sets of turnout gear arrived and are in service. There was an issue with the mobile radio in one of, in brush truck 606 that had failed and was not able to be repaired. So the radio service provider had a demo unit that they sold to the department, and also informed us that the manufacturer of that unit has issued an end-of-life notice, which means as of December 1st, that no service would be available for those units. And replacement of them will depend on the county's communication plan, and that will need to be included in for future budget preparations. Under the police report, there were 203 calls in September. So far, 1,246 calls year-to-date. What was at Wine Fest was completed with no significant incidents and no overtime. Let's see, active, let's see, speed trailer continues to be used. If you notice, it's up near the high school. We've got three requests for conference trainings, one for Officer De Temple for firearms instructor course, and Officer Prawl for patrol tactics conference, and those two did pass. And we also have a request for Chief Remicker to attend the new chiefs and sheriffs training through the Department of Justice in January, and that is being recommended to finance and personnel for approval. Bills were approved. The parking on Lake and the effective Crescent, excuse me, parking on Lake Street and the effective Crescent Beach Stormwater Outfall Project has been tabled. The committee discussed dog ordinances. The Chief, Remicker, also provided us an update on the police department budget. We talked about a school resource officer and the acquiring of a speed trailer by the Algoma Police Department. We had two licenses that were approved, and next month, we'll be talking about dog ordinances as well, parking down at the youth club. And the next meeting will be on Monday, October 28th at 4 o'clock at City Hall, and the meeting adjourned at 5:28.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, the radio, that's, those things are seven years old, and they're no longer able to be serviced.
Yeah.
That's, that's...
I know, and all of a sudden now, we'll be faced with another big bill because the...
Because you're going to replace?
Be replacing all of them.
I mean, I think that should be kind of placed on the county somewhat, since we were pigeonholed into what we could buy and what, and we bought what they told us they had we had too, and here we sit in seven-year-old radios that are going to be boat anchors.
Yeah, I agree. Any other comments? Chief, do you have anything to add? Okay. Then let's move on to Marina, John.
Marina Committee met on September 10th at 5:00 p.m. All members were present with the exception of Ryan Klessig, who was excused. Also present were Matt Murphy, Arnie Mueller, and Tom Yulotowski. The meeting was held in compliance with open meeting laws. The agenda and minutes were both approved. Under public comment, Tom Yulotowski introduced himself to the committee as a long-term Marina Correspondence, email from Troy Matson to Jamie Jackson regarding fuel bills was received and read. Approval of the bills, all bills were reviewed, and all the motion to approve the bills, payment made by Levy, seconded by Lutke, motion carried. Request for conference attendance, Matt Murphy seems to have asked many people if he can go to the Wisconsin Marine Association Fall 2019 Conference, and so far, everybody has said yes, so I'm thinking that's likely to happen. Management report, Arnie reported the hours of operation changed from, changed to 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. effective September 9th, 2019. Also that the river dock rub rails are to be, will be installed by City Public Works for the spring of 2020 season opening. Under Public Works, Matt deferred to old business and new business. Under old business, Ken Sport Fishing requests for fuel discount. No agreement documents found to support a 15, 15 cent a gallon discount rebate. It's unclear how this discount was to be applied. Arnie will compare Ken Sport Fishing billing to other customer fuel, fuel customers for the same day to determine whether or not the discount was already applied to bill for fuel. Further discussion is tabled pending in comparison of those findings. Under new business, we have a discussion on Marina closure date, the projected closure date in October 13th, 2019. Collection of launch fees after September 15th has become a moot point, but we did discuss it and brought it to finance and personnel. Items for the next agenda are fuel contracting and agreements, Marina Management Succession Plan, winter maintenance projects, and our next meeting is October 15th, 5 o'clock, at the Marina. Any questions?
Matt, do you have anything to add to Marina?
Not at this time.
Okay, thanks, John. Let's move on to Park and Rec, Kevin.
The Park and Rec Committee met on September 18th at 7 o'clock at the youth club. All members were present. The agenda, August minutes, and the bills were approved. No one was there for public comment. Under old business, the youth club had two rentals, Knudsen Hall had one. Under cemetery report, the cemetery crew has been doing general maintenance, and thanks to Mike Solsider, he repaired the chimney over there in the chapel. Under parks report, co-ed flag football will be starting September 14th. Thirty-nine kids have signed up. Robertson will be working with Erica Berger and the high school students for the teen night only starting in October. No fall planting classes this year due to having enough plants from the supplier. Blood drive was September 26th. Trick or treat will be October 31st from 4:00 p.m. till 6:00 p.m. Those wanting to hand out candy should leave their porch light on. Membership for the youth club are due by the end of October. Under community building update, we got some new LED lights have been installed throughout the building, also at the park buildings. Under parks updates, the new swing set has been installed at Peterson's Park. We're working on finalizing the grant requirements. The fall project of moving the backstop fence will be postponed until next year because of all the rain. We're working with Algoma Utility to get a price on new lights at Perry Field. The Gaga Pit and Eagle Scout project by Jacob Shepherd will be installed at Perry Field on October 19th. Under Crescent Beach, we're seeing a lot of erosions along the beach. Stantec and Ellen RP will be meeting with Robinson on October 1st. Public Works replaced the culvert by the chamber building. Under new business, the roof over the walkway by the gym is leaking. We worked on getting an estimate for that. We had a dedication to Christmas tree point on September 19th, and we had to change some of the prices at the youth club concessions. Next meeting will be October 27th, October 22nd at 7:00 p.m. at the youth club. We adjourned at 8:22.
Questions or comments?
I have a question regarding Demise Park. We noticed that the storm fencing is still up. They've actually reconnected the fencing at the park, and it appears the grass is rowing quite well on the other side of the storm fencing. Will that storm fencing be coming down soon?
Were there after that, that Demise Park snow fence?
That thing might have wanted to let grass...
Get established, I think, and it is still awfully wet. I know there's more or less mud seated in there, in the water, but that snow fence is still up. I think they wanted to just get it established, grass. And, you know, I haven't been in there. I don't know, is there still standing water in there?
Yeah, usually every time I've checked it out, there's been water in there, so...
We'll take a look at that, John, and see if we can get it removed, and I'll talk with Mike Solsider as well, but I know Mike wanted to try to get that established before there was paw prints and, and human prints, you know, indented in the mud there, so...
I appreciate that.
Sarah, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, we added a winter potting class for November 23rd at 10 o'clock, and people who want to participate in that need to register by November 8th.
Just a comment here, because I see pictures out on Facebook. I know Facebook never lies, but the erosion that's taking place down at the south pier, I'm sure you've seen it. Matt has been in contact with the Corps of Engineer. Our local Corps of Engineer members are going to come down tomorrow and look at it, and we're hoping that, if you remember some time ago, we did a letter-writing campaign. We went to all our elected federal officials, asking them to repair that south pier. They all did a joint letter, but the answer we got back was they didn't have any money for the 2019 budget, but they would look at it for 2020. Just speaking with Matt before the meeting on this, he said he talked to our local ones, and they're going to come down tomorrow. This now is, at the point, it has to be fixed now. Cannot wait till, till next year because of the erosion that's taking place, and it's just going to get worse after winter. So if anybody calls you on it, Matt should have an answer tomorrow, back from these gentlemen, and hopefully we can, if we get something, we'll throw it out on our website, letting people know what's going on. So just wanted to kind of give an update. Did you have anything to add, Matt?
Just that everybody knows, we did fence it off today, just to kind of make a safety barrier this afternoon. Finally, it got, it fenced off. I would prefer, in talking with Bob Stanek from the Corps of Engineers out of Kewaunee, Detroit District, but Kewaunee Office, and Bob and another gentleman from the Corps will be up here tomorrow to, they've, Sarah with the Parks Department has forwarded me pictures. I forwarded them on to the Corps of Engineers, and they're evaluating the pictures, but they will be up here in person tomorrow to take a look at the issue. And with talking with Bob Stanek, he thinks that this should be enough to push it into the emergency category to get it fixed here this year, so...
Thanks, Matt. Okay, then let's move on to public works. Lee?
Public Works Committee meeting was called by 4:00 p.m. by Chairman Dashlet in compliance of the open meeting law at City Hall. Excuse Kelly Cosse, other members are present. Also present, excuse me, also present, Matt Murphy and Jeff Huffman. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. Motion carried. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the August 20th meeting minutes. Motion carried. No public comment. Presentation and approval of the bills. Motion was made and seconded to approve the bills. Motion carried. Reports, Jeff Huffman gave his report of August 2019 for the wastewater treatment facility, like the rest of the summer, Mother Nature has given us a great amount of moisture, and the wastewater treatment facility is processing millions of gallons of, but all is good. Few pump replacements, other than that, normal maintenance. Matt gave his report on the bridge construction. It is, it is weeks behind schedule due to unforeseen problems under the bedrock placement footings. They are working as fast as they can to get that and try to stay in schedule. Second and Street and First Street projects are moving right along, hoping to get this done and closed before the snow flies. Storm sewer was replaced on the south side of Chamber Building. CDC grant was approved, awarded $3,000 for barricades and cones. All major events in the city are done and prepped for all fall leaf pickup and tree trimming. Old business, Matt presented us with two proposals for large item pickup to replace, spring and fall, and cleanup for blue water service and harder disposal. Committee recommend the council that they review at the finance meeting both the proposals, but the recommendation from the committee would be harder disposal. Discussion started on the price estimate to begin Sixth Street lift station repairs and replacement, but motion was made to adjourn and reconvene on February and reconvene on February 27 due to members having to leave other commitments, and we had no quorum to finish the meeting. Meeting adjourned at 5:23 p.m. Next meeting is September 27 at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall. September 27, 2019 meeting was called to order at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall by Chairman Dashlet in compliance with the open meeting law. All members are present. One excuse, Scott Meverden. Also present was Matt Murphy. Motion was made and seconded to approve the agenda. Motion carried. There's no public comment. New business, Matt presented us with the proposal from Aries and Associates on the cost of getting a proposal on repairing or fixing the Sixth Street lift station system. Motion by Kelly Cosse, seconded by Dave Meyer to give Matt the go-ahead to proceed with Aries for the upgrade repairs. Matt then presented us with a proposal from Aries and Associates for the storm runoff problem at Summit Beach condos. Kelly made a motion to present the Aries proposal to the two condos associations, Summit Beach and Maritime Point. They can work together to move forward as they wish, if they want to, at, at their cost for the proposal, with the understanding that this isn't going to be no cost to the city. It was seconded, and motion carried. Matt gave a report on the Church Street sidewalk problem and how they resolved it and possibly moving forward with the remainder of the sidewalk going south to North Water Street. Committee recommended to leave it, leave it alone until we get complaints. The sidewalk is not a safety matter, don't matter, take care of, it is not a safety matter. Take care of the matter when we need to. Sewer usage rate updates from John Mayer, utility rate consultant, with his recommendations, we need to raise the rate 5% to 7% to catch up with the inflation and to build our fund for the future repairs at the wastewater treatment facility. Committee recommended that the city put a 5% rate hike for the start of 2020. Motion was made and seconded. Motion carried. Discussion on Ventrac stump grinder. Public Works had purchased. Matt figured that the money we have saved in our grinding will be saving rather than hiring out. Seeing we have the Ventrac machine already, money will come out of the budget. Committee approved and thanked them. Next meeting is October 15 at 4:00 p.m. at City Hall. We had changed our public works meeting. We'll be on every third Tuesday of the month at 4:00 p.m. now, starting October, and motion was made and seconded to adjourn at 10:58 a.m. Thank you.
Matt, can you give me an update, or people watching at home on the bridge and our projects that are going on?
Sure. So the bridge update, I'll start with the bridge, because I think that's everybody's big concern. On the south side of the bridge, for the last five weeks, you saw a big steel structure. That is the end cap wall on the south side of the bridge, and the wing walls all connected. That finally went Thursday afternoon in the water into that area where that needs to be, and Friday morning, they poured about 250, 300 yards of concrete over it. That has to cure now. Once that concrete is cured, they will start pumping that water off what's still inside of that coffer dam. Once the water is pumped off of that coffer dam, they'll be able to pull the coffer dam out, and they actually will be able to pour that top section of it and start the false work. The scheduled date now to start the false work is the 14th of October. So that bridge will be open till the 13th, that Sunday. You'll be able to travel that section. The 14th that morning, though, they are planning on starting the false work, which we'll actually start to see a bridge. It'll connect the north side to the south side. And then, once the false work is all up, the ironwork will go in. They'll tie all the ironwork, and then there's very little, some conduit that has to go in, and then they'll be able to start pouring concrete. And they are still staying adamant to their, they're going to be finished by that second week of October, I'm sorry, November. It's still their substantial completion. They don't want to change the times yet. They're still working through how that's going to happen. They keep saying they're going to have more guys, bring more guys on site. I haven't seen it yet, but that's what the contractor is still going to bring more guys on site to keep that time going. So that's about anything, everything to date with what's going on with the bridge. The Second Street and First Street, our projects with Peters Concrete are, I think, headed in the right direction. They finished up on First Street last week. They had a little storm tie-in this week, this morning, and then they moved back down to Second Street, where they had to add a little bit, 105 feet of additional storm work going down towards the bridge project. We were waiting for that steel structure to get out of the way, and that happened last Friday. So the crusher showed up. If anybody has noticed, a big, huge pile of gravel and concrete and blacktop sitting down by the wastewater treatment facility at the end of Sixth Street. Peters Construction showed up with their crusher. That will be milled right there on site and go in dump trucks and go back to the subgrade for Second Street and First Street, which they are going to start building Second Street tomorrow. And as soon as they're done building Second Street back up to grade, you should see that street back opened up. It will not obviously be blacktopped yet, but you will be able to travel with vehicles once that subgrade is brought up. You'll still see some cones on manholes and different things, but the road will be travelable again until blacktop time comes. As soon as they're done with Second, they'll move over to First Street. They'll do the same thing on First Street, and once that is, is complete, they will, curb and gutter guys will show up. Curb and gutter will start to go in. Sidewalk that needs to get repaired will start to go in. The utilities with, with the street light, I think, Pete, correct me, I think you guys have all your wire in, all your, not your wire in, but all your tubes for the wire. So that's all been completed ahead. So once that gets done, it'll be just a matter of scheduling northeast, and I don't see why we won't meet our, our substantial completion date the end of October here, as long as everything keeps going the direction it's going. I kind of talked with the water and sewer, Pete, do you have anything? I, from what I heard, I think all the water stuff went in fairly well.
Yep.
So that's all I have. The bridge project, the Second Street Bridge project, our Second Street project, the First Street project. I'd like to thank BDK. I think I've been on the radio more than some of the guys that work for BDK lately, but I'd like to thank them. They've been, they've done a great job for the city of Algoma of getting the, out to the public what's going on. And also Jamie and Amber here in the office with sending out emails to everybody on our email list, and for a while, every Thursday, it's like I had a standing appointment with the guys over at BDK calling to see where the, where we were with the bridge project, so. But that's all I have at this time.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate the update, and I know everyone watching us at home appreciates it too, so. Okay, let's move on to Planning Commission. That meeting was called to order on Thursday, September 26 at 6:00 p.m. by yours truly. The role was taken. The meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law. There was no one that appeared for under public comment. Under old business, Clerk Jamie Jackson asked that the members review the sign ordinance and submit recommendations, changes prior to the next meeting. We're working on updating our sign ordinance right now. Then the Planning Commission reviewed the ordinance 819, which is creating that Section 18.19 of Chapter 18 regarding conditional use, which will be put forth for a first reading at tonight's meeting. Then Clerk Jackson updated the planning commission on an addition made by the Finance and Personnel Committee to, to the ordinance, amending Section 18.06, which language was added to require that construction of the principal permitted use must commence within five years of the completion of the storage structure or seven years from the issuance of the conditional use permit. Hosh moved and seconded by Valice to approve the request by Dave Rickel of 811 Alpine Circle to combine three parcels on the property he purchased up there, and he approved, we approved the certified survey map. Matt was in attendance, and he gave us a detailed, the pros and cons of adding a stormwater ordinance. There was some talk some time ago about creating a stormwater ordinance, and after Matt gave us the pros and the cons, the Planning Commission was in agreement that we would not want to recommend that to the council to move forward with the stormwater ordinance. There was a motion made and seconded to adjourn. We adjourned at 6:27 p.m. Questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to CDC. Jackie?
The Community Development Committee met on September 16 at City Hall at 6:00. Everyone was present except for Bob Davis, Blair Watland, and Anthony Nazzi. Agenda was approved. The minutes from May 20 were approved. The financial report was reviewed. No one was present under public comment. There was no old business. And under new business, the committee reviewed three community development grant program applications. One was from the Kewanee County Economic Development Corporation requesting $4,000 for the city's annual investment. That was, there was a motion and a second, and it was approved. The second request was from the Algoma Area Chamber of Commerce for $2,000 for 2019 concerts in the park. That was also approved. And the third request was from the City of Algoma Public Works Department for $3,000 for cones, barricades, detour signs, and lighted bucks used for community events, and that was approved. The meeting adjourned at 6:49, and the next meeting will be announced.
Questions or comments? Thanks, Jackie. Let's move on to Cable. Jake?
Cable Committee met at 5:00 p.m. on September 11, 2019. Eugene Cleveland and Arnie Hep were excused. Others present were Amber Shallow, our city treasurer, and our producer of our TV station. Moved by Teskey, seconded by Reinhardt, to approve the agenda for the meeting. Motion carried. Moved by Teskey, seconded by Reinhardt, this is going to get a little repetitive here, it's going to, to approve the minutes from July 10. Motion carried. Public comment. No one is present for public comment. There were no bills or claims for the committee to discuss or approve. The committee discussed the 2020 budget, and due to budget constraints, the committee elected to cut $8,893.75 from the proposed budgets. The cuts were achieved by removing a proposed part-time employee and cutting equipment reserves by $2,000. Special broadcasts. A presentation by Wistot, Wisconsin, Wisconsin Department of Transportation on the upcoming Highway 42 construction project from Kewanee to Door County will be recorded on September 19. Obviously, that's occurred in the council chambers at City Hall, so do turn in, onto Public Access TV and our YouTube channel, and you will find that TV program for vital updates about that Highway 42 project. Jamie Jackson provided a report on the number of views during the month for all of the YouTube videos uploaded so far. Remember, YouTube is free, so check out YouTube TV at the Algoma TV Network. A discussion was held regarding the camera and a possible purchase of a new camera. The consensus was the current camera is working adequately. However, it is five years old, may require replacement in the future. Amber will set aside the budget amount for a new camera in the 2019, 2020 budget for the future purchase to be transferred to the city's equipment reserve fund. I guess a further update was, would be that the high school has finally responded to Amber's inquiries, and there is some interest in student TV learning experience and filming various events in Algoma. So I would encourage you to double-check with the high school if you're interested in participating in that. The purchase of Pinnacle 23 Ultimate Editing Software was approved. The expense of the purchase, the expense of purchasing the new version, the station is currently running Pinnacle 21, will carry us through the next couple of years and still give the station a modern and current editing capable capabilities not found in the older version. That was a net, net expense of $97.75. New business, Amber Dell will be working on information inserts as overlays to be played during council meetings. The overlays will outline committee meeting dates and times at the beginning of each committee report, and you will see that on Algoma TV in the future. The only other old business would be Measure 50, which is the cable rebate from the state. I guess at this point, I don't have anything more to comment. There's been very little discussion, but you're going into session here in the next couple of weeks, probably to discuss that in the future. Would that be a correct assumption, Joe?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay. Next meeting date has been scheduled for Wednesday, November 13, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:01. Any questions?
Comments? Kathy, anything to add? Or Amber? No. All right. Thank you, Jake. Let's move on to library right away.
Okay. Algoma Public Library meeting met on September 16. All members were present save Nicole Meverden. She was excused. December 16, the meeting of the board was called to order by Ann Schoenborn at 4:00 p.m., and a motion to approve the agenda was made by, well, the motion was carried. Public input, there was none. A motion to approve the minutes of August 19 was made and seconded and approved. Friends of the library report the annual bake sale sponsored by the Algoma Library Friends is coming up, October 11. So you want to have some nice treats in the kitchen for a few days. Stop by the Visitor Center from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. At the Algoma Library Friends are actively looking for new members as well. Please contact the library for more information. Directors report. Staff is planning an outreach, outreach activities through the community. These include the elementary school, Pathfinder, St. Mary's, St. Paul's, and Algoma Long-Term Care. Kathy will be attending the Wisconsin Library Association Annual Conference in Wisconsin Dells on October 9 through the 11. Diane has begun her first online course for public library certification. The library has received a WPPI Energy Development Grant for the Algoma Utilities. This grant will be used for our 1,000 book before kindergarten program. Thank you, Algoma Utilities. Upcoming programs. Adult creative writing, second Tuesday of the month at 1:00 p.m. Teen Creative Writing Workshop, third Thursday of the month at 3:00 p.m., 3:30 p.m. Let's get cooking, Tuesday, October 8 at 5:00 p.m. That's tomorrow, so if you want to get on the cooking scale, hop to it. Books and Brews Book Club at Steel, Steel Street Hops, October 10 at 5:00 p.m. Lego Club, second and fourth Thursday of the month at 3:00 p.m., and our annual Halloween party, Monday, October 28 at 5:30 p.m. Do show up in your costume. Treasurers report. Revenues and disbursements were presented to the library board. Library bills, motioned and seconded and carried. Old business, none. New business. 2020 library close dates were discussed. Julia Lasacki, our, our secretary, and reviewed the calendar with us. Closed session, none. Open session, none. Item for next meeting, none, and, uh, meeting was adjourned at 4:28. They're really speedy meetings. Anyway, so an update, further update. The August book stats. Eighty-seven books were purchased, purchased, four audiobooks and 24 DVDs. And my monthly update is it's Halloween time. Fun facts about Halloween. Halloween is said to have its roots in ancient Celtic celebration in Ireland and Scotland. People would dress up in costumes and make noise in the straight streets to make evil spirits go away. The traditional colors of Halloween are black and orange. Orange comes from the fall harvest. Black represents death. Harry Houdini, a resident of Appleton, Wisconsin, a famous musician, magician, died on Halloween night in 1926. Whoa. Around 40% of Americans dress up in costume on Halloween. Around 72% hand out candy. Snickers chocolate bars are considered to be the number-one favorite Halloween candy. Am I right? Yeah, okay. We got approval. It's considered to be the second most successful commercial holiday in the United States after Christmas. Around 40% of adults sneak candy from their own candy bowl. I would say that that number is real low. Original jack-o'-lanterns were carved from turnips and potatoes. The library's annual Halloween party is on October 28, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. The Girl Scouts will be having their haunted house from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and we'll also have a photo op area, games, mini golf, crafts, and more. And then, in honor of our friends and compadres from south of the border, Halloween is also the Day of the Dead, De los De los Muertos, Mexican holiday celebrated throughout Mexico, Central, and South America, and it's, it's a festivity that is really a happy celebration rather than spooky. So to our... So to our...
November 2nd, actually.
Well, it's just, I've got the 31st through November 2nd. Okay, there we go. Somebody from Albuquerque, we got confirmation. So anyway, that's our update. We hope to see you in costume on the 28th, and I hope you have a fun and safe Halloween.
Thank you, Jane. Kathy, do you have anything to add?
No.
It's kind of hard to follow that, isn't it? Okay, Medical Board, John.
Still, I'm still focused on Halloween here. We had All Hallows' Eve, then we had All Saints' Day, then we have All Souls' Day, which coincides with the Day of the Dead. So that's how we keep that straight, I guess. The Medical Center Board met on September 26th. All members were present. Others present were Jean Marsh and Carol Knell. The agenda and the meeting minutes for August were both approved. There was no public participation, so we had no public comment. Financial report for August 2019 was reviewed. We had an occupancy rate of 83.7%. Average daily census of 35.16. Total patient revenues of 280,761. Total operating revenues of 310,194. Total operating expenses of 296,075. And when you put in 16, over $16,000 of depreciation, we ended up with a net loss of 2,437, still well above the budgeted amount. We did receive a focus on energy rebate for the insulation project for the heating pipes of $397. Approval of bills, motion by Rodri and second by Pabick to approve bills as submitted. Roll call vote, six yes, zero no. Loan repayment with three paydays in October. Seasonal reduced census and uncertainty about both the new Medicare and calculated Medicaid reimbursement method makes the quarterly $10,000 payment to the city risky. While the board is still committed to making quarterly payments to the city, delaying this payment is preferable to risking shortages leading to additional borrowing. The administrator was given permission to delay the third quarter payment to make it up when our financial position certainty improves. Under old business, parking lot update. City Public Works moved forward with cold patching parking lot. New request for proposal will be resent into the December-January timeframe to obtain more favorable response that the long-term care facility can afford. We had no responses to our previous requests for proposal. Also, the long-term care facility also received a revised invoice from Cedar Corporation, the amount of $2,685.95. Under new business, we're reviewing the employee physical and drug screen costs and practices. Based on cost comparison, Bellin will continue to be the vendor of choice for pre-employment physicals. Drug screening will be changed to a quick test and performed by the medical center personnel. Positive screening results will be verified by certified laboratory when indicated. This will reduce our current costs for this screening by 89% and provide more timely results. We had a scholarship request. Katie Duscher has applied for a scholarship to fund a wound care certification training. The cost of the training is $2,297. Motion by Dart, second by Pabick to approve a scholarship for $1,500, subject to our continued employment requirements. Understanding business, Friends of the Medical Center. The cement pad for the wheelchair-accessible glider on the patio has been completed. Cost of the glider was more than expected and is delayed for now. A new computer was for use by the nursing staff has been purchased by the Friends. We thank them very much. The board recognizes their commitment and generosity in making life for the residents that much better. Under the administrator's report, a reminder that Medicare patient-driven payment model, their new prospective payment reimbursement starts, started October 1st. Jean met with the Door County Medical Center regarding physical therapy services coordination. Minor issues were expressed regarding late Friday admissions of residents. We really don't have a lot of control over that. The new PD PM prospective reimbursement is also discussed. How much this impacts the medical center is not known. Strategies and processes may be modified to achieve success with this reimbursement We went into closed session and reconvened, went into closed session at 5:12. Also of note, Joan Russell departed the meeting at that point, and Marge Rodrian was now presiding for the remainder of the meeting. Reconvened to open session at 5:37. Roll call vote, five yes, zero no. Action as a result of closed session. Motion by Schmidt, second by Pabick to have the Vice President, Marge Rodrian, deliver the annual performance review evaluation to Jean Marsh. Next regular board meeting is 4:30 on Thursday, October 24th at the Medical Center, North Wing Meeting Room. We adjourned at 5:38.
Any questions?
Hearing none. Thanks, John. Let's move on to Utility Commission, Lee.
President. Guy Hosh called a meeting of the Algoma Utility Commission's order at 5:30 PM in compliance with the open meeting law. Members present, Guy Hosh, Mary Kay Bennett, Robert Felice, Wayne Schmidt, and Lee Dashlet. Others present, Matt Murphy, Scott Wees, Pete Hawke, and Nancy Johnson. Motion was made and seconded to adopt agenda. Motion carried. Motion was made and seconded to approve the previous meeting minutes. Motion carried. Comments of anyone present? None. New business, the American Transmission Company voluntarily capital contribution was discussed. Algoma Utilities was offered the opportunity to contribute a payment of $7,630. Algoma has earned between 3% and 16% on this investment. Motion was made and seconded to recommend the ATC purchase. Motion carried. Salt bids were discussed. Two bids were received. The current supplier, Compass Minerals, provided the lowest quote of $137.57 per ton, freight included. This is a 1% increase over the current price. Motion was made and seconded to award the bid to Compass Minerals. Motion carried. Hawke presented change order number three for contract number 41-31-15-02-19 for the repairs and modifications, repainting, rehabilitation of the 300,000-gallon water tower on Rubble Street. One, relocate the penetration at the top of the access tube to accommodate the new 30-inch diameter rough hatch, $1,500. Two, replace two and re-weld two brackets on the wide interior ladder to access the tube, $1,000. And three, apply pre-tox to the dry interior coating areas that will be abrasively blasted clean, $1,000, per recommendation of Dixon Engineering Incorporated. Motion was made and seconded to approve the change order number three for contract number, resulting in a net contract increase of $3,500. Motion carried. Hawke presented change order number four for contract number 41-31, 49-31-15-02-19 for the repairs and modification, repainting, and rehabilitation of the 300-gallon water tower on Rubble Street. Number one, add back the Wolfhead logo option on tank, $6,000. Per agreement with the Algoma School District, adding Algoma on the west side of the tank would have cost utilities $4,000. Adding the Wolfhead logo would be the total cost of $6,000. So the high school is paying the extra $2,000. Motion was made and seconded to approve that. Motion carried. Old business, 2019 water project updates. The crew provided temporary water services and metering to affected customers during the water projects near the Second Street Bridge project. Water mains and service laterals replacement was completed. Planning Commission update, no new utility projects. Motion was made and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Motion carried. Motion was made and seconded to approve the monthly financial reports. Motion carried. Capital operating and maintenance budget will be presented at October's meeting. Motion was made and seconded to adjourn. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 6:00 PM. Next regular commission meeting will be Wednesday, October 16th at 5:30 PM.
Questions or comments? Pete, do you have anything to add? No, sorry.
I just wanted to ask for clarification. So the water tower is not going to have Algoma on the west side. It's just going to have the Wolfhead? Is that what I'm reading?
Just as it was.
Just like it was?
Algoma on the north and west, and then Wolf on the south and east.
Okay.
And it will be yellow.
It is yellow, yeah. Oh.
Any other questions? Pete, did you have anything else to add? Thank you. Okay, that's it for the reports. I'll accept a motion to approve all the receipt of the committee reports.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, under old business, Ordinance 817, that's amending Section 1806 of the Code of Ordinance for the City of Algoma, Wisconsin, relating to storage structures as a conditional use in R2 zones. This is the second reading and the adoption this evening. Any questions on that ordinance? Everybody understands it? It's coming out of the, we've met on this several times, and the planning commission has met on it, so I'll accept a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Mitch. Roll call vote, please.
Mary.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Wees.
Yes.
Heverden.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. New business, we had some applications for operator license. Those were read during the PPP committee, so it's my understanding they've all been approved. There's two of them there. I'll accept a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Moved by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Eugene. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ordinance 818, that's repealing Section 1301-2C of the Chapter 13 of the City Algoma Code of Ordinances Regarding Compensation for Utility Commission. This is the first reading. I'll accept a motion to present the first reading of this ordinance.
Moved.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by Lee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ordinance 819, creating Section 1819, Chapter 18 of the City Ordinance Regarding the Conditional Use. Again, this is the first reading, and this does, this comes out of the planning commission recommendation. This is the first reading. I'll accept a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by John. Any questions or comments? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 918, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Burr Construction for repairs and replacement of the youth club gym roof. I have a question. Is this all of it, or is this just the part that we talked about in the beginning?
No, that would include all of it. Just because the nature of the condition of the shingles that are on it, especially on the one side, they would just be brittle as they try to blend that in.
Okay.
So instead of just doing one side and waiting for another year to do the other side of the roof, we asked to get an estimate for the whole thing, and they came up with a figure.
Okay.
It'd be the whole roof over the gym.
Okay. And monies are coming from general fund?
Capital borrowing, she said.
So that's what it's...
Yeah, she said capital borrowing.
It'll come from capital borrowing.
Okay, thank you, Amber. All right, anybody have any questions on that? It's something that's needed, so we can't, we can't put it off, so...
Just verify, I don't know if it makes a difference, but you called, you said 918 resolution, it's 981.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, 981.
Makes a difference, but...
Thank you for that correction.
How does this roof tie in with the Legion Hall?
It doesn't.
Isn't that one leaking also?
It is. We're looking at different options for that. We have an option that's quite a bit cheaper. We just don't know if we want to go down that road because of the warranty. And rather than get into it tonight, I think it'll be something we'll talk about at Finance and Personnel. Not that I'm trying to avoid the issue, but it's a little extensive as far as the procedure and the thing that Matt found out. It's a lot cheaper, something we could probably afford, but then there's a warranty issue, so we'll bring it up at Finance and Personnel and talk about it. But it definitely does need to be addressed. This is only taking care of the youth club, so... I did have a motion in a second, correct? Or didn't I? No? I'll take a motion in a second. Moved by Eugene.
Second.
Second by John, then to approve the contract with Burr Construction to replace the youth club gym. And that's going to be done this year yet, correct?
That's what it says.
Yep. So I'll have a roll call vote on that.
Please.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Heverden.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 982, authorizing Algoma Utility to voluntarily contribute $7,630 to the American Transmission Company for additional capital needs. Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Office Enterprise Incorporated for a new postage meter.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to authorize two refunds requests from the Algoma Marina customers. You heard the two names mentioned in the Marina minutes tonight. Basically, they're people that had docking and didn't use it, they're...
The first, yeah, the first deposit. Go ahead.
The first one was a deposit. The second one was for an unused portion after someone had to move away. The deposit was a reimbursement in full, and the unused portion was a prorated amount, less than what was requested. And I'll make the motion.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That's it for new business. Under my comments tonight, I just want to make one comment. If you haven't had an opportunity to go out to the city's new website, first of all, when you go on the website, the picture that you see, the first thing you see was a photo by James Brey. Beautiful picture. What I like about it, if you haven't gone out there, take time to go out there and look at it. It's very user-friendly. All the departments are not complete yet. I mean, we're working on park and rec and Marina and different things like that. There will be an updated picture of the council that's on there. That'll take place tonight. But I want to thank Jamie and the company that we work with. Jamie put a lot of hours putting this thing together, and I want to thank all the managers and everybody for all their input. If you haven't had a chance and you're listening at home, take the time to go out and look at it. It's very nice, so... That's all I have tonight. Are there any agenda items for next month? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept a, our next meeting is Monday, November 4th at 6:00 PM. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this meeting's adjourned.
Sarah.